It is 10 o'clock and the Kerrville City Council Workshop is in session. Do we have other comments?
No, sir.
All right. Then let's move to 2A. I'm going to go ahead and read it in. Public Safety Communications Infrastructure Project.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and introduce this item and then I'll introduce a multitude of staff members that have been assisting on this effort. As you recall, during the summer budget discussions, we had briefed a few times on the need for that staff was entering into assessments of our radio communication infrastructure, particularly in the public safety realm. But obviously, it's got a very strong IT backbone component to it. It's not just the handheld radios that our public safety officers wear day in, day out when they're risking their lives doing their jobs for the citizens of Kerrville. As you recall, we had identified some needs early on and in fact, had several budget elements that were we were looking at as we were progressing through the summer budget sessions that we pulled back from because we didn't, you know, as always, we want to be mindful of taxpayer resources and we don't want to throw good money after bad. And we knew some of these systems were reaching the end of their useful lives. And so what we didn't want to do is make major investments with capital funds or otherwise operating funds that would go towards systems that we knew really needed needed more extensive replacement or a new strategy. And so we've been doing quite a bit of research, particularly under the leadership of our IT Director, Charby Torque, and then certainly in conjunction with the chiefs. But going through an effort of really assessing, what's our current situation on the ground? Do we have differences amongst the where we're at in the radio systems between our departments? And then also our interoperability because obviously, we do a lot of our public safety work in partnership with county services, in partnership with other counties. Crime unfortunately knows no boundaries, it knows no borders, and it often crosses county lines. And so we've been doing an extensive research effort really over the last six months and digging into finding some solutions to the problem. They're not necessarily easy solutions, they're going to have some some price tags to them and we'll go over those a little bit with you for where we're at right now. But did want to bring you along in the process of where our research has begun to lead us at this point. So with that, bring Ms. Charby Torque up for the brief to City Council.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mr. Hoppy, thank you for the introduction. So as Mr. Hoppy mentioned, today's conversation is going to be about the public safety communication system. So if anything, in the last 18 months, what's taught us is how critical communication is, you know, with the pandemic, the winter storm Yuri, and other recent public safety incidents. So kind of the outline for today's discussion is going to be our current system, the challenges with our current system, and the research we've done so far, and then which leads us to kind of the conversations about next steps. So I'm actually going to tag team with the chief, Chief McCall, and Chief Maloney. We spent a lot of time talking about this project, researching this project, and they're definitely great teammates to have on this project. So I'm going to ask Chief McCall to talk about the current KPD system, and Chief Maloney will follow up with current Kerrville Fire Department radio system.
So I'm going to try to go through and explain what our current radio system looks like if I if I use language or nomenclature that you don't understand. The three of us have kind of been living this now for for six or seven months, so it's a it's kind of become old hat to to us as far as as some of the the information. So just kind of set the stage, the Kerrville Police Department, we are the 911 center for the entire county of Kerr, meaning if you dial 911 somewhere in Kerr County, it's coming into the Kerrville Police Department Dispatch Center, we're going to answer that call and then dispatch resources or transfer that call somewhere to get those resources dispatched to the caller. So that is basically what a P S A P is, a Public Safety Answering Point. It's a 911 center, it's where the 911 calls actually come through. We have currently, our radio system is made up of of three conventional digital VHF channels. Each of these channels work on a repeater at a location at the Smoky Mountains Tower site, which is just just to our east. You can you can see it just outside when you step out where it's at, services all of our radio needs currently from that tower. That tower has three repeaters mounted on it, which should equal three channels for us to communicate on. We currently have two of those channels down, so we're operating on a on a single channel. It's a system degradation that's been occurring over years. We've had plans in the budget, as we kind of talked about, to to start replacing some of that and have really pulled back to ensure we were going in the right direction and allow us to research this project and make sure we're doing what's best for the citizens of Kerrville. Our dispatch center is currently made up of four dispatch consoles. The consoles are used for radio control, meaning being able to select up radio channel and physically talk out on on that channel. It also is utilized for toning, which which means toning for EMS and fire. It sounds like they just toned someone out from one of the fire departments. It's rolling by now, as well as patching. And patching is connecting of two radio channels, two separate radio channels, so they can talk as one radio channel. And that is capabilities currently in our in our dispatch center. Our consoles that run all of that are 20-plus years old, so well past end of life for a lot of that equipment. There is radio equipment in there that we may donate to the Smithsonian when we're done. It is it is they are relics and they still operate, they still they still work for us each day, but definitely getting to a point where we we need to look at getting those replaced. Our radio situation as as far as the police department in the field, we have in-car, we refer to those as mobile radios. So as you hear us talking through our presentation day and hear mobiles, mobiles are in-car radio systems. Some of our radio systems in car are up to 15 years old. We've made purchases several times between 2005 and 2012, so we have different ages deployed in the field, but we do have some of those radios out there that were purchased in 2005. Portable radios that we carry every day, these are our portable radios that that we wear on our person. They're 12-plus years old and we have about 80 of those deployed currently.
Are the new ones as big as those? Just cumbersome?
Yeah, pretty much the same size, yeah.
Okay, you just have a lot of things going on.
Yep. These are these are currently single-band radios, which means we can only talk on...
Okay, when you take it out, it's not that big.
Yeah.
Full package of items.
Right. These radios are currently single-band, which means we can only talk on one bandwidth, which is VHF. We've we've done some research and we'll talk about what multiband radios are going forward. I'll let you I'll let Chief Maloney explain the KPD's radio situation.
Council Mayor, next slide. All right, talk a little bit about our radio system. So the Kerrville Fire and EMS Department, we have two of the conventional digital VHF radio channels. So that's what McCall was just talking about a second ago, and it's those single-band radios is what we have. So we have our repeaters. So repeaters allow us to communicate from the field back to dispatch. So so once again, I have a portable here. So if I were to key up a portable and talk to it, this would go to a tower first, as he mentioned, on Smoky Mountain, and then it would go actually over to dispatch. It allows us to get a greater range as opposed to just talking back and forth like the walkie-talkies you would see at Radio Shack, they would just be back, they do not have a repeater.
They go to the tower and then to dispatch?
To the tower, to dispatch, or to the tower. If I wanted to talk to Chief McCall right now, so I could key it up, it would go to the tower and then it would come to Chief McCall here and talk to him. So a little different when we talk about a repeater. So of what a repeater does, it extends the range of and the strength of the communication between us.
You only have the capability of that, not the police department?
We all do. So all our channels for VHF and all public safety radio channel, everything is repeated.
Okay.
So is what they call that. So it's called a repeater. And so so that improves the communication, improves the strength of the communication and the signal strength and the distance that we can do. So so our repeaters that we currently have, they're located on Smoky Mountain Tower, as mentioned, Cherry Ridge. So Cherry Ridge is our other one that is just about two miles north of I-10. Herman and Sons Herman's Water Tank, that's in Comfort, so we call that our east tower. And then Central Texas Electric Company Tower is a mountain home, we consider that our west tower. So obviously, when we we talk in regards to EMS, so we are countywide, so we require more towers in order to communicate countywide. So because the distance in order to communicate back with dispatch or other vehicles for there. However, at this point, only one of our two channels is operable. So we currently have two channels on VHF that we could talk through, picking Channel One or Channel Two, but our Channel Two does not work. It's not a reliable system is what we have.
What does that mean? Why do you need multiple channels?
So multiple channels allow us to, if we had a an MCI event, as we did in the past, so all communications comes over one channel. So means that not only are we talking when we're at the event itself, but Mrs. Jones, who also has the lift assist, or the heart attack lost town, or the structure fire, is all coming across one channel. So it makes it it's a challenge. So typically, sometimes we want a second channel or another dedicated channel for major incidents, fire ground activity for us, or other dedicated on-scene incidents that you don't need other talk around at the same time.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll explain where where we're going with the with the rest. But in regards to the two channels, one of ours is down, so we've tasked Advantage to help us resolve that Channel Two, is what I'll call it, issue since 2018, to make that more of a dedicated channel for us. So they've been working on that. They reprogrammed our dispatch consoles, they reprogrammed all our mobiles and portables. We rolled it out in December 2019, we're going to move forward, we got it fixed, it failed us during a structure fire. So we went back to the drawing board with Advantage. So they started scanning for what we call interference, that we were not getting good communication because somebody's channel, if you think like a radio channel, was really close so to us, and so they thought that was interference. They replaced some equipment on our tower, thinking that would go. We rolled it out again this January of 2021, it failed us again during a structure fire, and now that has been taken offline completely because we don't have the reliability during a structure fire or any dedicated event to really be able to get out if we need to get out for that. So both our repeaters that we currently have for city channels, they looked at those, they're 17 and 19 years old, which does cause a lot of degradation to the system and to the communication, and that was the last spot we actually left it, and that was the conversation about potentially replacing those. But we want to have a bigger conversation in regards to the radio system for public safety before we start making some more adjustments or changes for that.
So I have a question, and so tell me this, it sounds like it may be addressed later, so you don't need to answer it now, it's going to be addressed later, but with the towers, are those leased sites and do we pay like is that and will that continue or are we going to talk about the difference? Is that going to be part of the discussion?
It's coming up a little bit later.
Okay, all right.
But yes, we lease all the towers, we do not actually own the towers themselves, so we actually leased the the site. Like you were thinking, any tower like C-Tech has a tower, so you can rent space on their towers for that. So our radios, so a little different situation than the police department is, our in-car mobile radios, those are the ones in the vehicle self. We have about a 10-year replacement schedule that we've been keeping up with over the years for that. Portable radios are also on about the 10-year replacement schedule, and we have about 70 different portables out there. And as Chief McCall mentioned, all are what we call a single-band radio system, which means it's a VHF channel is what it is, so a single-band, single radio station that we actually communicate through.
So y'all have been on a 10-year replacement and y'all haven't been on a regular replacement schedule?
No.
Okay, just, okay.
Do we know what the average lifespan is for those?
About 10 years, so about 10 years. So we're not, so ours, I should say, our 10-year replacement schedule is not, I would say, hard fast for that, it's just been a cycle that we've been on and something that we could be able to put in the budget every year and be able to replace those and start replacing some of our older ones. Some of them come with our ambulance remounts every year, so that makes it a little easier to tie it in with that every several years.
And Chief McCall, can you speak to probably why we haven't done the replacement before? Like, was it just budget-wise, we didn't give you the funds for it, or?
You know, I I can't speak to to 20 years of of a radio system and what's going on. I know, you know, just from perspective of the department, we've tried to run lean and mean for for many, many years and tried to push all of our equipment to the nth degree. And this is another example of we've kind of come to the to the end life of of this equipment, and I think we've gotten our money's worth out of it plus. So I I think it's definitely a good time for us to to look for the future and start looking at new technology and where we need to head.
You know, it does it does raise the question of having having a schedule to review this frequently enough that we don't get into kind of the hole we're in now. Because I mean, these these communication systems are just critical to us. If we had a, you know, we had a major event and something happened that we couldn't communicate properly, which was to some extent true during the winter storm, then we're in a fix.
And that's something we've definitely taken into consideration as we're looking at all the systems that are out there, and we want to ensure that we're we're looking at the preventative maintenance side as we move forward, whichever direction we decide to go.
As you recall from our summer budget discussions, it's been a big effort for this administration is to get on track with replacement schedules for capital assets, our rolling stock, and our other assets that we have across the community, and really getting those built-in plans so that way, you know, we're not getting into a jackpot and getting into a hole, so to speak. And so we're we're working through that, and that's part of this issue.
Yeah, okay.
Harvey, before you talk, this is a completely different subject, but I just want to ask, because my time on council, which has been just a few, I mean, y'all have been on longer than me, but but I've I've seen that that we're coming across deferred maintenance on streets, we're coming across deferred maintenance on vehicles, we're coming across, and we're correcting it, and I'm glad that we are. But my question is, are there going to be other, are there other things that you know of, Garmo, or whoever knows of now, that are in the same kind of cycle of deferred maintenance that we're going to be needing to look at beyond these needs? Because it seems like every big-ticket item, it's like, well, this wasn't done for 10 years, well, this wasn't done for 20 years, well, this wasn't done, you know? And I, you know, as to why, I don't care, I just wonder going forward, I think that that needs to be on the horizon, and is there anything else on the on the?
Well, I think certainly the community's taken major steps forward on water and sewer over the last 10 years. As you know, we're going through another wastewater and water analysis, so that's one of them. Streets, obviously, this council's been very strong on streets in the last four or five years, and we've done very robust, we're going to continue to continually assess those elements, right? We've gotten major hurdles on rolling stock and getting a good assessment of where that are, and you all went through those discussions the summer. The the next point of criticalness really was some acute points regarding public facilities, and in particular, our public safety facilities, which as you know, we're going through that effort with the bond committee right now. I think there's some other facility pieces that we've got to continue to be aware of that we do have some aging buildings out there, but I think we've we've taken some major strides in that with our utility infrastructure, as far as our utility building that's been renovated recently, and then certainly City Hall. So so those were two of the big ones that had been achieved in the recent past. The one that had really been not achieved was the public safety building, but this one was certainly the next critical that came up that that needed really a full-blown assessment, and that's what we've been undertaking the last six months.
Yeah, and please don't misunderstand, I'm not being critical, and I and I really don't, I'm not really concerned with with why in the past.
Sure.
But I appreciate that as we're looking at things going forward, every time I hear us talk about items that, you know, have have degraded or things that are, you know, out of out of their useful life, that we are building in replacement cycles, and and this shouldn't continue to be that kind of issue going forward. So I appreciate that, is really what I'm I'm getting at, but but I've just been surprised by a lot of of those things.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of deferred maintenance from this community for a number of years, you know, as tax rates continued to just be driven down, driven down, and and
And then you cannot, yeah.
The bill comes due, and that's kind of where we're at.
Right, right, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt. No problem. So a lot of these key points the chiefs already touched base on, but I kind of want to go over it again. So with our conventional VHF system, and I know you've heard that we've thrown around the term conventional quite a bit. So think of a conventional radio system as going into HEB and you've got three open lanes, right? So in each of those three lanes, you're you've got customers that are designated to a certain lane. So, you know, they're moving through the line, some lanes go faster than others. Now, lane one may be clear, but your customers in lane two and three cannot switch over to lane one because they've already got their designated users, and you can't switch between the the lanes, we call channels. But that's how a conventional radio system works, is you've got three lanes, they're all open, and but you've got designated customers in each of those those lanes. And if, again, if one frees up, you can't just move users over there. So that's the way it it works in a conventional radio system in terms of of communication. So as you can see, it's not really efficient use of resources, so just kind of give you an idea of of the conventional radio system. Radio coverage with a conventional system, VHF system is inefficient for public safety operations, limited building penetration. As Chief Maloney mentioned, VHF system is susceptible to interference, limited system capacity, kind of the the example I gave you about the grocery store lanes, aging infrastructure. So there again, with the aging infrastructure, we have system degradation, hardware failures, audio degradation, and in dispatch and also on the field, the dispatch center has outdated technology, no support or preventative maintenance contractually available, and no reliable local support. I think Chief Maloney touched base on those key points. And I know you asked a question about the lifespan of the handhelds, the portables, and the mobiles. So yes, they're 10 years, but I just also want to bring up that warranty only lasts five years. So anything after five years, you're talking about post-warranty work. So just to kind of give you a visual of the problematic coverage areas around town, the chief's put together kind of a list where they kind of critical points where we're having coverage issues. Peterson Regional Medical Center is a big one, the large our large retail space such as HEB, Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, the west area of the city, Fire Administration Office, Methodist Encampment Area, North Coronado Area. I mean, so these are some of the major areas in town that we have no, our folks out on the field have no communications.
And Charby, just to clarify, you go back one, as you noticed, several of these go forward are related to large building structures. And, you know, these are big population centers though as well, as folks are entering into those facilities and obviously, some some very critical ones, particularly with the hospital element. That's a combination, really, the technology with that VHF piece, which is lacking, as well as our topography. We talked about it a lot in regards to utilities, but it our topography is very challenging for radio systems as well because of the nature of our hills, large trees, et cetera. Those all make it very difficult with the the current radio system.
Julie, do you have a a cost estimate on out-of-warranty work that has been done?
We have, you know, really good details as far as any maintenance work that we've done on, you know, radios or technology equipment in general, I can certainly get that. I don't know how detailed I could get it down to what was warranty and what wasn't, but we could get pretty close.
That would help, thank you.
Even just this last year, as you may recall, we were looking at several hundred thousand dollars of maintenance that was going to require, not necessarily with the radios, the handhelds, but with the backbone infrastructure related to repeaters and other elements. And we we pulled back on that because we really wanted to get direction on, hey, are we heading a totally different direction?
So so just to give you an idea, when we send one of these radios to Motorola to have to have work done, it's $500 when it shows up at their facility.
Oh.
And then whatever on top of that
Wow.
... costs to fix it. So it's $500 to get it looked at.
Wow, okay. Chief McCall?
Yes.
So Chief McCall is going to go over some of the operational challenges from the KPD side?
So when we talk about operations in the field, our our radio system is limiting to us. We currently have no ability to separate radio traffic during emergency events or special events or even general daily operations. And what that means, chief kind of touched on it a little bit, a little bit ago, we've kind of talked around it, is we're we're down to a single primary channel that we're using to communicate. For example, an emergency event, when we had the major crash at the airport, that would have been a scene where we would have wanted to been able to isolate the radio traffic because we were pushing so many resources there, they were overwhelming the the radio channel. But we still had to simultaneously run the rest of the city and the calls, emergency calls that were happening elsewhere in the city, and dispatch that information on that same channel. Similar to similar to that, Fourth of July, that's really when we figured out we were down to one channel, we were working on our Channel Two for that event, and early in the day, we figured out that that was not going to work for us. Our communications were weak at best, we're missing transmissions, people weren't being heard. So we had to, again, transition over to our primary channel and utilize that at the same time all of our daily traffic was going on. And then just general daily operations, we we run into situations throughout a day, whether it's some type of an emergency event or if it's a high-risk event that we're taking care of, be it even something as simple as clearing a building on an alarm call. Normal operating procedures for a police department when you're in a high-risk situation like that is to close a channel, meaning all of the radio traffic ceases, goes to another channel, and only those people on that scene are communicating during that time period until they open that channel back up for regular communication. We we really have no ability to do that. We do that, but we're really limited to, hopefully, everybody heard that, and nobody's going to key up over the top of something that's going on that's high-risk at that time. We're also very limited in our communications as far as geographical region, geographical capabilities. We are really locked into the city. We recently had a operation where we were surveilling a robbery suspect. He was in a vehicle, he was moving north on 16, less than a mile north of the city limits on 16, we were done with being able to communicate via radio. The supervisor was in charge of that, then had to move over to cellphone, we were trying to coordinate between multiple people, dispatch, multiple agencies. So we ran into we ran into some issues by the limitations of our geographical capabilities based off of our our current radio system. We also experienced daily dropped or garbled transmissions, almost daily, almost hourly, you'll hear dispatch respond to someone and say, you've gone digital, and that's what it sounds like, just sounds like digital sound coming across the coming across the air, and that that cues the person to repeat whatever they they had just said and hope that it comes through the next time. Definitely not an ideal situation from an officer's safety perspective. We've kind of we've touched on this a little bit on on the previous slide, we have poor, no communication within a lot of our larger structures within the city. Once we enter into those buildings, the disruption of the of the radio connectivity is such that that we can't communicate in or out of the structure, as well as even to the point of how we set up our dispatch center is affected by the number of radio channels we have. We should we should be able to set our operations in dispatch with assignments, but currently, there's no ability for us to separate off radio traffic onto different talk groups to be able to make those assignments within dispatch where they are responsible for for that communication, or they're responsible for a certain acute communication and call-taking. So there there are some limitations that are even being created with our operations within the dispatch center with our radio system and what we're able to do with it. Really, all of these things are are officer safety issues. Any one of these could create a situation where an officer is trying to communicate in in time of need and nobody hears them, and nobody is responding to to help them. That's really what is scary to me, that that's kind of the worst nightmare thing for you as a police officer is reaching up and talking and and nobody's hearing you when when you're in need of assistance. So I think the officer's safety side of where we are operationally with our communication system alone is is enough for us to spurn on on these conversations and really look for a look for a better solution.
Chief, and you may address this, are your systems such that someone from the outside world can pick up what what you guys are saying to each other?
So our channel is encrypted, meaning that you have to have encrypted technology to hear what we're saying, you have to have the basically the key to unlock the the transmission that's going across, and those are that's programmed into the radios here and in the car and dispatch so that it knows to to unlock those things.
So basically, that's not a problem with what you've got, or would that be improved with a new system?
It it could be improved, it's it would be similar technology in that you would encrypt it very similarly. I I think the difference in the two would be the the reduction in interference, because you can still receive interference even though your transmissions are encrypted, similar to to what Chief similar to to what Chief Maloney was talking about earlier with the with what they've looked for as far as interference, interrupting their transmissions as well.
Chief, what kind of, what kind of system did you have in Hobbs?
We had a eight hundred megahertz uh system. It was a eight hundred megahertz simulcast system. We were a, uh we were countywide operation, so we had a a regional dispatch center. And with that, we built out our radio system around that. So it uh it simulcasts not only through the city but through the entire town.
Talk about some of the challenges we're seeing with the fire department. Once again, so there's a lack of ability to separate that radio traffic between fire EMS and emergency operations, similar to what Chief McCall talked about, the MCI, same situation for us for that. We also have a lack of reliability, reduces the fire EMS operations to a single channel. So um imagine what they call walking on. So if we have a mayday call with a firefighter in a building and we can get walked on when they're toning out for a lift assist for Mrs. Jones at Edgewater or a a heart attack or a motor vehicle crash, so that happens very regularly, is why we really need that second, a dedicated channel for emergency uh traffic. So that way, when we get on those those high risk scenes, structured fires, we have a dedicated channel to listen. Dispatch can hear us, we're dedicated to listening to the firefighters that are inside the building for that. We're limited communications, we're geographic capability. So once again, it kind of goes, ties in with that lack of building penetration with the VHF. VHF is great for distance, so works well for distance, does not work well for penetrating building walls, brick and mortar for that, so there are some challenges. It's a, and we'll talk about that in a second, how we can improve that. So daily dropped or garbled transmissions, we get that interference. We have poor communication within large. So even as you saw at Fire Administration, some of that is because of the wiring in there. It used to be auto phone back in the day, so there's a lot of wires. But a building like that, um I cannot get out on my portable, get on a mobile. It just doesn't have the strength, excuse me, in order to get out of the building itself. So I can hear, but if I need to communicate outside, I have to walk to the front foyer and get on a mobile, which is in the in the building or what we call base radio, and be able to communicate out for that. So once again, a challenge, even if something as easy as Fire Administration Office for that. These challenges, uh you know, when we talk about maydays, serious fire conditions that we need to report, present a serious firefighter's safety uh issues. It's why we've been really working hard to try to get that channel two. And at this point, we just can't get channel two to a point where reliable, where I feel comfortable. So it's Fire Chief to have that operating on the fire ground. So we took that offline, I believe in March is when we decided we're not going to move forward with that. The EOC, talk a little bit about that. So the EOC requires multiple channels, imagine emergency operations. During the winter storm, we'll talk about that. So we had emergency response going on with fire and police. We had streets, we were supporting shelters, supporting the nursing homes, food and water for the homebound and potable water. All those are different missions. Those missions are very limited in that we can only communicate by cellphone. So obviously during a winter storm, could have some challenges with cellphone, one being on a charge them. So we were very limited in our communication out there. We had to call our, we call our task force leaders for that to get the information that they were doing out in the field. So we knew where to actually track them when we're in the emergency operations center of where they were on completing each task uh for for the mission, so for the water. And that's where we're very limited in what we have with the VHF system. We just can't expand like we would want to, even if I had channel two operational. That only gives me one more channel to communicate on and emergency operations is big. So and that that would definitely be something we're going to talk about in a second, about what those opportunities are for us, so.
And so a question for both chiefs, I'm just looking generally, what, how many channels would be adequate for your operations for both departments?
So eh as we go forward, we'll we'll start talking about uh about our goals and and where we're headed. We'll really start talking in talk groups rather than channels. Currently with VHS systems, we're locked into channels. As we move into uh where we're headed, the with our conversation of a seven hundred megahertz system, that gives us the ability to create infinite talk groups and and uh arrange those how we need to for our operations.
Will we also be building into the conversation? I mean, the reality of whether we're going to be stuck in our same structures or hopefully moving into a new facility and what that looks like in both situations since we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, y'all know what I want to happen, but I mean, um or so are we taking all of that into consideration when we move this conversation?
We have, in particular, the the, you know, regard, the the criticalness of this is going to need to be achieved probably before that that building. We can't, you know, that's a two to three year at at best on fast timeline. And so this infrastructure is going to need to be put in place before then. And so we are going to need to look at the accommodation of those dispatch consoles within existing facilities.
Because our facilities are limited as well as the, as well as the, as well as the system. I mean, so are we going to have to pay to accommodate for a facility that is not adequate? Hoping that we get into a facility that is adequate and then having to upgrade at that point? Are we, I mean, is that, y'all probably working through all of that?
What we've taken into account at this point is um the the mobility of those dispatch consoles into a the, a new facility, right? And so um we'll be planning for the future while ne- you know, needing a current uh critical piece at at this point in time and within the the facility that we can, we have at this point.
And Chief McCall, if you wanted to respond, I don't know if you're resp- uh I'm sorry, Chief Maloney. I don't know if your response was similar to that of Chief McCall, uh how many channels you would need or for your department?
So uh we're going to talk about that in a second and what the, what the seven hundred system does and looks like that. It's a little different, and so I don't want to get too ahead because it can get, it can get a little uh convoluted as far as that conversation. We're about to talk.
Chief McCall, you were talking about uh what you had in in New Mexico and you had a eight hundred um megahertz system. And you're talking here seven hundred, what is the difference?
Really just the band of of operation is what the difference is. The the actual systems themselves uh will work uh identically. The backend uh technology that runs the radio system uh would be the same. The only difference between eight and seven hundred is where you're transmitting at, what what frequency you're transmitting at. So it it doesn't affect the actual operations of the system at all.
Seven hundred band is a dedicated public safety band, correct?
There's a spectrum in the seven hundred band that is dedicated for.
And you usually hear seven, eight hundred used uh together, seven, eight hundred trunk system, which we'll go into when we talk about kind of our our radio system goals.
A curiosity question, how do you guys, how does fire communicate with police today? You've each just got one channel there.
So today, so uh chief's on his uh police department channel, I'm on my fire department channel. One of us has to make a decision to go to the other channel. How we would talk. Not the same when we talk about seven hundred, which is really uh really kind of clever, the way it works. And that and that communication can all happen from a dispatch as opposed to us making a decision.
Okay, thank you.
So with all that being considered, the challenges we're facing with our current system. So we got together internally and did an exercise as to what we want to see in a new radio system. What we want to see is a reliable citywide radio coverage with the capability to operate in the region. Improve our problematic in building coverage. Improve audio quality and reliability of communication between officers and dispatchers. Efficient use of channels, frequencies, um that's expandable out to other city operations. And I'll touch base on that piece i- in the next slide. Enhance interoperability with neighboring cities, counties such as Bernie, Kendall County, Gillespie County. Responsive and quality, proactive maintenance and corrective maintenance support. Twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty days monitoring and support. Do it cost effectively for future scalability and most importantly, ensure the safety of our personnel and citizens for all public safety requests. So um touch base on this was uh the topic of a seven hundred megahertz trunk system versus a conventional system. So I know you used HEB as an example for a conventional system. So for a trunk system, think of um Bank of America, right? So you've got three tellers that are open and everyone, all the customers are lined up in a single file line. And there's a person at the front of that line that kind of directs you to which teller to go to. So as soon as the teller frees up, the customer's directed to the next available teller. So at no given point in time is there a teller that's idle, that's not doing anything. So you see the difference between a trunk system versus a conventional system is that there's really no idle time uh for the customers. Oh, unless of course there's no traffic, uh no communication. But that's, you know, that's the difference, the key difference.
Charlie, you may need to advance the slide on them.
Oh, sorry, thank you, sir. Um and also with a seven hundred megahertz system, uh raise the in building signal strength penetration and problem problematic cover areas. A trunk system allows for each, so I I use this bullet, each frequency channel to support multiple talk groups. But really, in the conversation about a trunk system, there's really no channels or frequencies. That term doesn't get used because we're talking about talk groups. All that, the channels are managed in the backend automatically. So whatever becomes free, that talk group, you know, all that will.
Roll into that spot.
Correct, yes. Interference impacting one channel does not fully disable a talk group. Again, because of how it's managed in the backend, if you have interference on one channel, all that's done automatically in the backend. They'll just transfer to another channel. Resiliency, site can lose a channel and continue supporting all talk groups. Again, same concept. It's just the controller is managing a pool of channels in the backend that your users, your your subscriber units aren't going to see. And as we talked earlier, the spectrum of seven hundred megahertz is dedicated to public safety use. So dispatch center goes, I'll touch base on this, chief, unless you want to? Okay. So, you know, as we're going along, you see there's there's the infrastructure cost. There is the infield mobile portable cost. And then the important, important component is a dispatch center. So in there, our goals for our our dispatch center is to improve interoperability, improve audio quality, provide backup center dispatch, improve operational efficiency, which includes reducing the noise distraction, enhance fire EMS paging, dispatcher assignments, speed service response times, improve console reliability, customizable configurations. Going back to customizable, so our systems are so outdated that when you talk about process, there's probably three or four um actions that they need to take to accomplish one uh action or one process. With newer systems, it's literally built in, you can customize those those actions where it's just a click of a button for a dispatcher. So you know, seconds, time is critical. Technical support, provide for growth and keep the cost down. So um with all that being said, here's kind of what we're looking at, the seven hundred megahertz trunk radio system project. It's a single site, six channel. Sorry, I'm advancing, I'm working both. So it's a single side, six channel, seven hundred megahertz trunk system, similar to what uh Chief McCall had in Hobbs. Replacement of all of our single band radios, including KPD and KFD, that's a total of eighty-six mobile radios. That's in car, a hundred and fifty portable radios, that's your handhelds. Upgrade of all dispatch consoles to provide new features to improve response times. Microwave link for increased resiliency. So there is fiber at that tower site and that's going to be the primary um connection. But if that were to fail, you have that microwave link for redundancy. And you know, our history with fiber cuts here in Kerrville, I think that's pretty critical. Radios with newer technology and better audio quality, the programming installation of all radios, proactive system maintenance, and I think that's very critical, that's what we're lacking with our current system. So there's proactive and there's corrective maintenance. If you take care of your proactive maintenance, you won't run into those corrective maintenance issues, which is what we're, the situation we're in now. Twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five vendor support. Project, after the project is awarded, it would be a nine month implementation. And the estimated cost for the project is two point, three point two million to three point five million. So that is the radio project.
Now, Ben, there's a couple of questions. When we talked about on a previous slide and you gave the example of the bank and you have the teller or the individual who's navigating the traffic. Is that done by the system or are we going to have to have a dedicated person do that? And then, I guess I'll I'll stop there first. Is that automatic or what?
It's automatic in the backend, so. Right, the person that was directing traffic, that's the controller on the backend and that's all done automatic, seamless.
Okay, then my next question really is irrelevant. And then, how do we do it right now or with this project and when we enhance the radio system? You had a bullet point on that of communicating with our neighboring cities. You know, if there's something going on in one city that's going to end up, it's a example of car chase that may go through Kerrville and they want assistance from our department, how does that currently work? And is this going to enhance that or are we not able to do that right now?
Not radio wise, it's a phone call. It's a phone call from one dispatch center to another dispatch center. And they're, they're trying to relay information from a, uh let's use Kendall County, a Kendall County officer to Kendall County's dispatch, to our dispatch, to the car in the field. So there's a radio transmission, a phone conversation and a radio transmission to make that happen currently. The seven hundred way, uh with the, with the seven hundred uh systems, you can select up uh Kendall County's talk group, our talk group, patch them together and we're talking.
So these other counties already have this kind of system, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I don't like, I don't like that.
In a way, it's good.
I know, it's good for future, but I mean.
But it is good in that it lends a direction of where we need to go. And it it already, you know, it helps us from an interoperability standpoint and know where other people have headed.
Another question you'd mentioned about connecting some of the other city systems in this. Like in a severe weather event, uh would the streets guys have contact through this system? About what roads they're blocking and?
So from a handheld radio standpoint, right now, we've identified, these these that are indicated to you as far as the mobile radios and the the portable radios are are the ones that are simply KFD and KPD. However, in the future, it gives us the capability to to, because this is a more robust system, we absolutely could look at tying in radios for those personnel in in those instances or issuing uh radios during emergency needs for the personnel uh that are that are out there uh in those activities.
I assume you would want to be limited in who had those radios, who had those contacts?
Well, it really depends, right? Because of the nature of the talk groups, um you're really able to isolate groups and and to have specific uh user groups, so to speak, for particular instances, even within public safety or outside of public safety.
Even within our department, we can set up supervisor talk groups that only supervisors can hear. Or administrative talk groups or investigative talk groups. And if your radio's not programmed with that uh talk group, you won't, you won't even know the communication's going on. Or even have access to it.
Yeah, so with our current system, we were to want to create a a channel for communication for public safety. We would have to go out and get licensing for another channel and that in itself is just, you know, additional costs, additional management. So but with the the, a trunking system, again, you just create a talk group ID, set those units, portables, mobiles onto that talk, talk group. And then you're, you know, everything else is managed on the backend. So it just uses the channels more effectively, efficiently. You know, kind of when you think about the HEB example, where you know, you got a lane that could be free up for thirty minutes, but no one can go there because it's dedicated already. And then you got the the other, you know, Bank, Bank of America example where it's more efficient because no teller, you know, you're assigned a teller as as you, it's your turn in line.
What about scanners? What does this system do to prevent, to prevent, say, Joe Blow, who has a scanner from picking up on your conversation and racing, you know, over to your emergency, you know, to pass out a lawyer's card or something?
There is a encryption component, um that's also part of uh the project so that the traffic will be encrypted.
Okay, so where do we get the money from?
That's one of the things, it's always, what's, where's, where's the, how's the bill going to get paid, right? Charlie will go into next steps, but you know, this was an element that we did identify, at least within your capital budget. We didn't have identified funding resources yet because we weren't sure exactly where it was going to land. And we still don't have, we've got some estimates, uh but we don't have, uh you know, an exact proposal yet at this point. You know, we we do have some capital funds undesignated that we may have to look at. We're looking at grant opportunities that may be available. We may have to look at redirecting uh some capital funds uh from some other projects based off of where, you know, this one has landed. And so those are some discussions that we want to have with you guys once we know a little bit more about where the the actual number lands. But that's why we really want to initiate the request for proposal process. Charlie will talk about next steps.
So what we've already done is, of course, an assessment of our current system and identify coverage gaps and system efficiencies, which we presented to you today. We've done our research, uh what current systems.
We've done our research, what current systems, what systems are out there and current technology. We've also benchmarked other cities, met with other public safety entities just to kind of hear what they're using, their, you know, pros and cons of each system. So the next step, as Mr. Hoppy mentioned, was to do an RFP, to solicit proposals for a 700 megahertz trunked radio system capable of meeting our current and future communication needs, both reliably and functionally. And we're hoping to do that, have a 2022 implementation.
So no action from the council desire today. Obviously, we don't have posted for anything. We really just wanted to be able to bring you guys up to speed on where we were at in our research on this issue and really, you know, get a head nod that y'all are comfortable moving forward with our general direction and initiating that RFP process. Our hope is to put something out here at the end of '21 and hopefully have good estimates or good proposals back so that you all can, you know, look at an award, hopefully in early '22, because we do feel like this is, we're reaching a point of criticalness in regards to our public safety personnel out there. And we really, we need, because it is a nine-month implementation, we feel like we need to move forward in the early part of '22 as long as we can get solid proposals back.
So you're comfortable that we have, we just have to, that you can find the money?
We're going to, we're going to be doing our level best here over the next two months to patchwork it together and find the funding that we need because we just have to have it. There's no option.
And we didn't build anything into the budget, so this entire, we knew it was coming, but the entire project cost is going to have to be accounted for, and there's nothing already spoken for in the budget for this year.
Part of that, part of the estimates that we've looked at so far are, they would be within that first-year, five-year time span probably that are condensed. Depending on what proposal, some of those you're, you pay initially and it covers you for the five years. Some of them would be worked into operational budgets over that five years. And that's kind of what we need to figure out within the actual proposals that come back to us.
So you're saying we're not going to have to cut a $3.2 million check necessarily on the front end?
Hopefully not necessarily on the front end. I do think, you know, give or take, it's going to be probably around that $3 million mark. And so we'll be able to hone in on that once we get the proposals actually in. Again, some of it's going to be related to hopeful grant funding that may be available out there. Some of it may be redirecting capital funds, and then certainly some undesigned capital funds.
I know this question is difficult to answer, but the, what you've been using lasted for 10 to 20 years here. How far, technology changes so fast. How far in the future is there a reasonable projected time that this will serve us well?
Chief, you could speak to your current radios and.
Yeah.
And you may not be able to answer that, but.
You know, part of, I think part of what we're looking at in this project is continual support and continual maintenance. We have opportunities to become parts of other larger systems, and those systems have pretty heavy investment in them already from other entities. I think that adds to the longevity of what we, what we're looking at. I think there's a lot of other stakeholders that are involved in any of these systems that we go with that'll have a lot of the same needs as we do and wants for it to continue to work for us out into the future. And I think, you know, with the maintenance and if we stay up with the technology over time, I think we can continue to expand and scale out the system as necessary.
Yeah, because you're talking about, do we get support through the life of the system?
That's certainly what we're looking for. We're looking for a system that's going to have a better support maintenance mechanism over a long-term relationship.
Right.
Because, I mean, you know, the way I see this, you know, you have presented us with some challenges. You've given us a solution, and with the benefit being added safety and health advantages for our community. And I see this as a cost of doing business.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your presentation.
I would just like to add that I think, you know, the cost of doing business, but here's another thing. What if we had a fire police officer that was in trouble and couldn't communicate? And what would the public think if we had not provided for the safety of these officers? I spoke to the HEB Foundation staff this morning. Part of what I use, Gallup Q12 questions on what makes a good workplace. And one is, I am supplied with the equipment I need to do my work. And so that's what we're talking about.
Absolutely. And the technology's just changed, right? Over the last 15 years, it's gotten better. And we're at the point where we need to invest in the new technology to be able to provide the best tools for our folks out there.
Sure. Okay. Other questions or comments in the council?
I want to thank the chiefs for your time, staff, Charvey, Julie, Giedel for bringing here, and look forward into this project. Thank you.
One question I've got. We use a lot of consultants around here. Y'all have spent a lot of time on this. Is this a situation where bringing in a consultant that knows about these kind of systems could save time and maybe even money? You got to have the input from the folks on the ground, but I'm just, that's a hypothetical.
Yeah, I think for this one, you know, we were fortunate in that we had both operational expertise and quite frankly, the expertise of Charvey to be able to step in and lead this effort over the last three or four months. It has taken a lot of her time, but, you know, we're fortunate in her leadership. I don't know if you guys saw, she's a recent top 40 award winner from KDC. But, you know, we just appreciate her leadership and being able to run point on this effort. And really, it's been a multi-department effort that she's been able to lead.
And what is the cost savings in not getting a consultant?
Who knows? We're thankful.
Is there a way staff can get a, or, I'm sorry, not staff, council can get a copy of this presentation for our record?
Sure, just a hard copy?
Yes.
Or electronic?
Either way, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions at 10:58, we are adjourned.